Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to call up each one of the newly elected candidates so they can receive the oath of office and afterwards they can have a seat at the table. So Hugo, would you join me?
All right, very good.
Okay. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Hugo Alves.
I, Hugo Alves.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, next up Laura. Stand next to the five, stand. Raise your right hand, please. I, Laura Kelly.
I, Laura Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Matt Wexler. Okay.
Hi.
I, Matthew Wexler.
I, Matthew Wexler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Matt Campbell. Hi, how you doing? Okay. I, Matthew Campbell.
I, Matthew Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member of the Board of Education.
The duties as a member of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And that concludes our oath of office ceremony. Thank you. Forgot the book. Ryan? So much for conclusions, sorry about that. Come on back over. Okay, there you go. Archival pen. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Right there.
Good enough.
Hold it straight up. I think you're there, you are. All right, thank you. Pictures, go ahead. Yeah. There you are.
James, smile, James. James.
Thank you. Wait, I can't be the only one.
Thank you. Thanks again.
All right. Wonderful. Welcome to our new board members. The, this point we'll move into our organizational meeting, which will, is our meeting to determine chair, vice chair, secretary of the board. But before we do that, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to this person sitting over here on my left, our first selectman Kevin Moynihan. Through the years, these last six years, I'm incredibly proud of much of what we've accomplished together. And, I mean, these things include the establishment of the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, the road connecting the high school to Waveney, fondly called Tiger Trail. Of course, our move from Locust Avenue to 220. There's so many things that we've accomplished, so much time that we've spent together. And over these last six years, Kevin, you've been a great supporter. I do want to just take a brief moment to go back in time a little bit, because I think we were working very well together. And then we ran up into the pandemic, which was something that our first selectmen, superintendent, others had never imagined possible. And I think in that, during that time, you showed decisiveness, a leadership, and inclusiveness that meant the world to me. We did amazing things, I think, together in support of the New Canaan community and others. The, the shopping that we did, many people don't know many of these things. We, when the food scarcity was occurring across the country and in the region, we worked together to use our supply chains for our food service to order food and then package it through with volunteers over at South and then deliver it to the homes of seniors all over town so that they didn't have to go to the grocery stores themselves. We knew the food pantry had food, but we wanted to get them perishable foods. We wanted the meat and milk and cheese and breads and, and those kinds of things that we know are so important in the homes. We did that multiple times right in the spring of 2020. It was in conversation together that we made the decision to move Meals on Wheels out of Waveney into the high school. And we did that from early spring right through into the summer because we were worried about everything else going on at Waveney Cares and we wanted to, we had the resources, we had the personnel and staffing to do that and brought Meals on Wheels right in. We, we did lots and lots of other things, delivering meals to families in need. And really throughout that experience, put people first all throughout. Even so much that we had the birthday parades, if you remember, where we worked with the fire department, the police department, and kids on their birthdays because we knew they were sequestered. They went down the roads to the house with the sirens, with the fire trucks and the police trucks and it was, for many, many of our kids and families, it was a highlight of that experience. And, you know, all those ideas and more, Kevin, really showed that your commitment to the community and I was very, very proud to be part of it. One of the things I admire about you is that you will always stand up for what you believe to be right. And you've been a great partner for me in the schools and I'm glad to take this opportunity, have this opportunity to say thank you for a good six, great six years together.
Thank you, Brian. So this is my final act as first selectman and Deanna takes over at midnight. And I, I thought about having Deanna do this because it's somewhat ceremonial, but I really wanted to come mainly to talk about the man on my right because, you know, the last six years, and even before that, on the town council, it's been a pleasure, every opportunity that we had to engage. I've never seen this gentleman in any kind of mood other than an amazingly professional and upbeat mood and, and so I, it's, it's been an amazing experience. Especially, you're going through, the pandemic was like going through a war and we really felt like we were in the trenches and I really just appreciate every, every opportunity to work with you. And you've been, you know, the reason our recent community survey said our schools are excellent is because of this gentleman on my right who's excellent and does a fabulous job and his team, you know, it's been a pleasure working with your leadership team. And so I thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of the community and thank you personally for everything you've done. So, thank you. I also want to congratulate the newly elected members and the returning members. You know, public service is not easy. And stepping forward to serve your community in the tradition that was born in Connecticut 300 years ago, you know, self-government is not an easy thing. But we, so I congratulate you to step forward and represent your community and do the hard work to make sure that we do the best, best, most important work on the planet. So I really commend you for doing that and thank you for your service. I also want to thank the team again for the amazing dedication and your whole, going to that convocation every year and seeing your, your amazing collection of teachers and educators is just amazing. So thank you all. So it's my duty finally to conduct your election and I would first of all ask for nominations for chair. Penny?
I'm pleased to nominate Phil Hogan for Chair of the Board. Phil has been a valuable member of our board for the last two years. He served on two important search committees. He's taken his responsibilities extremely seriously and shown bipartisanship and he has consistently shown his support for the Board of Ed's budget during meetings with other town bodies. Phil prioritizes not only board business, but all opportunities to participate in the district work, such as our recently, almost completed, almost there, Portrait of the Graduate and our district-wide presentation by Mark Brackett. Most importantly really, in this, in May of this year, we unexpectedly had an opening and Phil was stepped into the role of Vice Chair of the Board. He received the unanimous support of the Board in doing so. And as Vice Chair, he has been diligent, committed, member of the executive committee, and I think he's chaired a couple of meetings as well. And during those six months, I think he's learned the role of the executive committee and he's built great trust with Dr. Lutzey on our amazing leadership team and full administration teachers. So I think actually it's very crucial that board members have experience on the executive committee before stepping into the role as Chair. I think we do a disservice to our outstanding administration if we nominate board members who are not as prepared as possible to take the leadership roles within our board. So Phil has demonstrated throughout his time on the Board, his commitment to the many stakeholders in our community and most importantly, to achieving the best outcomes and the best experience for all of our students.
Do I have a second? Eric?
My second.
Do I have any further nominations for Chair? Julie?
I'd like to nominate Hugo Alves. I love working with Hugo and I've sat across from him for two years now. And I love watching him from across the room, holding court with the administration and the other board members. And I think Hugo has earned everybody's trust and formed solid relationships with, with all of us sitting up here at this table. He has proven, has a proven record of working alongside all board members and prioritizing what is best for students. He is thoughtful and committed to keeping our schools the best in the state and he leads with integrity and has the ability to bring out the best in each and every person. And I firmly believe that. So therefore I nominate Hugo.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second? Laura?
I'll second Hugo.
Thank you. I don't know how you do your.
We'll have to do roll call.
Roll call.
Any other nominations first?
Well, I suppose it could be for the nomination, any further nominations? Hearing none. Call the roll. I don't have the roll to call. Do you want to call the roll?
I can do it. I'll just go left to right. Start with Brendan.
Sorry, I pick one?
Yes.
Okay, Phil. Thank you.
Okay. Matt?
Hugo.
Julie?
Hugo.
Laura?
Hugo.
Hugo.
Erica?
Phil.
Hugo. Hugo.
Phil.
Okay.
Hugo ahead. Congratulations, Phil. Hugo.
I'm Hugo. Congratulations Hugo. Thank you. All right. Nice chair. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Matt?
I'd like to nominate Erica. I think she's been an incredible public servant and has shown incredible willingness to reach across the aisle and work to find common sense, agreeable solutions to everyone. We'd be very lucky to have her on the executive committee.
Do I have a second? Phil? Any further nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none. Congratulations, Erica. Thank you. You can raise your hands.
All in favor.
All in favor? Is that unanimous? Yeah? Okay. You don't need roll call with unanimous, right? Okay. Secretary?
Yep.
Is there a nomination for Secretary? Laura?
I'd like to make a nomination for Matt Campbell. I think Matt Campbell, over the campaign, we worked closely together and he has shown incredible integrity and fortitude throughout the process. He represents the families and students in the district and I have complete confidence that he will be able to easily step into an executive role alongside and work very well alongside Hugo and Erica. And I think he would be a great addition to the executive committee of our Board.
Thank you, Laura. Is there a second? Julie? Are there any further nominations for Secretary? Penny?
I'd like to nominate Phil for Secretary. For all the reasons I thought he would be a good Chair, I think he would be a valuable member of the Board. And I also do think, I think the way the Board runs, I think it's complicated and I think it's, we're a young Board. A lot of members are new and I think having an executive team that has experience is really important. And I think for all the reasons I stated before, I think Phil would do well to continue on in the role as Secretary as well.
Thank you, Penny. Is there a second for Phil? Erica? Any further nominations for Secretary? Hearing none? All in favor?
I'll just do the roll again. I'll just do a call.
Okay.
Start with Brendan?
Phil?
Matt?
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 Phil.
Matt? Matt?
Phil.
Congratulations, Matt. Again, thank you, the new members, for your service and Dr. Lutzey, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you.
We will just take a moment where, for Hugo to come over. We can, Erica? Matt?
I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education on Monday, November 30th, 2023. First, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is repaid. The United States is our representative. It is our honor to stand one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen.
Next, we're going to review and approve the agenda for November 20th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second? All in favor? Or abstain? Ah, right.
Well, they're approving the agenda, not the minutes.
Yeah. No, next is the minutes, sorry.
Yeah.
So, all in favor, I believe that was unanimous? Yeah. Okay, next we're going to approve the minutes and there will be some abstentions for November 6th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Penny? I have a second. Brendan? All in favor? Okay. And then who abstains? All right, moving on. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allocated to each speaker with a maximum of 15 minutes on each topic. Any members of the public that want to comment? Seeing as there are none, we'll move along to reports and recognition.
Yes, so, thank you. We will go right over to Mr. O'Keefe, our Director of Finance and Operations, who has the monthly statement of accounts report to share with us. Take it away, Sean. And you should have that in your packet for a second.
Good evening. Thank you and welcome to our new members. As reviewed by the Board of Ed Resource Committee, I'm going to take you through the October Statement of Accounts. In summary, our operating fund expense actuals through October, 26.3 million or 25.5% of our full year '23 budget of 103 million. We have also encumbered an additional 68.1 million or 66% of the budget, which is primarily comprised of salaries, benefits, property services, including utilities and maintenance contracts, and purchase services, which includes primarily transportation and out-of-district tuition. The remaining balance of 8.7 million is encumbered and is mainly made up of salary-related accounts that are not fixed and includes overtime, substitute teachers, drivers, bus monitors, payroll taxes, and, and certain portions of out-of-district tuition. On page two of the package is a monthly attainment analysis that shows year-to-year attainment versus budget. This year, our attainment, as I mentioned, is 25.5% through October. That compares to 25.27% for the same period a year ago, which is an indication that overall we are currently on track to achieve our current year budget. On pages seven and eight of the package is a summary of our grants that reflects that of the awarded grants of 2.538 million, we have spent 397K and have a remaining balance of 2.14 million. In the school lunch program, the financials are reflected on pages nine and 10 of the package. As of October, school lunch revenue totaled 730,000 or 24.76% of our full year '23-'24 budget of 2.948 million. Year-to-year, our total revenue is up 10.4% with sales up 7%. And of that sales number, 5% is primarily attributable to and across the board price increase of 5%. The other 2% is volume-driven. In addition to sales, we have catering, which is up 30% year-to-date. On the expense side, we're at 572,000 or 21% of our full year budget. This results in a net profit through October of 159K, which will be helpful in funding some of our needed equipment replacements, such as refrigerator walk-ins and beverage display units. On pages 11 and 12 of the package is a summary of facility rentals, donations, and the results of our summer school funds. As of October, facility rental revenue is 34,000 and expenses year-to-date are 44,000. On the donation side, we're, we're currently at 425,000, which includes 350 that was received in early July related to the Dome project. to get the Board of Ed's feedback, in order to sort of begin to paint that picture of what the budget's going to be. The next meeting, we've invited Joe Spurgeon to attend, which, who is our insurance consultant. So he'll be with us, that's the third Monday in December. And he'll spend about an hour going through the self-insurance plan, how it works, the budgeting for it, how it's performing, and we'll get a sense of what we're thinking about for the budget going forward with that. When we come back after the holiday break in January 8th, we have the budget presentation to the Board of Education, at which point it is the superintendent's budget proposal. And I'll bring it to you, and we'll spend that evening going through the details and working through the, an understanding of the budget and their request for the '24-'25 school year. We have a workshop scheduled for the week after, an evening workshop for the Board. It's, we'll probably run that as a Resources Committee, where we can go in and again, sort of go through and get feedback and work our way through. Because on the 22nd of January, the Board of Education is scheduled to adopt the budget as its own, and that's when it transitions from the superintendent's budget proposal to the Board's budget proposal. And then, as you'll see, not soon thereafter, we'll be presenting, I'll be presenting the Board of Ed's budget to the Board of Selectmen. And at the Board of Selectmen, they focus on capital more than operating. We'll have some back and forth about that as we go. And then it goes to the Board of Finance. So you may want to just circle for your calendar, the Board of Finance date of February 6th, which will be the initial presentation of the Board of Education's budget to the Board of Finance. And then they'll have a public hearing on March 5th, and then finally their vote on March 7th. So it stays with them for about a month. And then it transitions from the Board of Finance to the Town Council. So again, it'll be the Board of Education's budget presentation on March 12th, you may want to circle that one. And then a public hearing on the 28th with the final budget vote on April 2nd. So as you can see, the work that begins in October runs us right through to the start of April. Many people get an opportunity to take a look, provide feedback, work their way through. But those are probably the most important touchpoints for you as Board members to circle in your calendar, and if you're able to attend, always welcome to be there. And certainly, you know, the public hearings and the budget reviews and whatnot, we always like having Board members present with us. So I wanted to just get you those dates as quickly as possible, so maybe we'll put a hold on a couple of them and we'll go through our budget.
Thanks, Dr. Lutz. Any questions? Seeing as there are no questions, we'll move on to the action items. Tonight, we've got a donation from the New Canaan Community Foundation. And do you want to talk about that?
Sure, sure. Yep. So this is an incredibly generous donation, which grew out of a program that we were piloting last year to assist our students that are currently in our free and reduced lunch program. Without going into too much detail, the long and short of it is that it's an opportunity to help some, help children across the district that are in that program to have a little bit more flexibility in their purchasing of snacks and food in our cafeteria. So it's an incredibly generous program that really is, there's one anonymous donor who's underwriting this for us. And this isn't the total, there's a little bit more involved in everything else. But the idea is to help make sure that every child in our school district feels valued and included and welcome. And we all know that the cafeteria can be a tough place for all kids, and I think this makes it a little less tough for some of our kids. It's an incredibly generous act. And so it's coming through the New Canaan Community Foundation, but it's really one individual who is unnamed, but is just an incredible human being for helping our kids out like this.
Yeah, that's wonderful. So I would like to take a motion, make, who'd like to make a motion to approve a donation from the New Canaan Community Foundation in the amount of $27,649.76 for students enrolled in the free or reduced lunch program? Penny, second? Oh, sorry. Laura? Erica? Erica? All in favor? It's unanimous? And then, moving on to policy updates. Move to approve a second reading of the Revised Board of Education Policy 5100, the Age of Entrance and Grade Placement in the School System, as first moved and seconded by Mr. Hayes and Mr. Alves, respectively.
And I can speak briefly about this. I'm glad to go into more detail if you like, but the history is that the legislature changed the age of entrance into kindergarten this past year. They did, it was late in the session and it's starting in the '24-'25 school year. So this year, we have to prepare. What we've decided to do with the Governance Committee, who helped to craft the policies, really, we took our existing policy and made some changes. As you'll see, the, it's the age of eligibility, so it's moved from December 31st to September 1st. And so we changed that in the fourth, the third and fourth paragraph. I think what's most important is down on the bottom. This policy was designed as a one-year policy, because this is brand-new for us. So we'll have, we'll be revisiting this in a year after we have an opportunity to see how it works and see how the meetings go and the decisions are. We wanted to put something in place that honored the requests of the families and the parents who know their children best in this. So we put a system in where those parents can send us a letter to the principal expressing their interest of, for the child to attend kindergarten if they're born after September 1st. So if September 2nd to December 31st, if they express interest in writing, then the principal will schedule a meeting with the child and the parents. They can meet together, they'll talk about the milestones, which you'll see is attached to this as the regulations, just as a guide. It's what most children do by age five, and that they'll use that as a basis for the discussion with the parents about the child and the child's progression. And then, after that conversation, if the parents would still like their child to enroll, they, they'll be able to enroll and get started in kindergarten with us. So we wanted to reduce the friction as much, as much as possible. We have to be true to the legislation, which requires an assessment. We didn't feel it was right to be giving an assessment to a four-year-old, like a written assessment or otherwise, so we thought the conversation using these milestones as a guide for the conversation could be, you know, that's the assessment, so to speak. So that's what we're going to use this first year, and we anticipate that, you know, it's flexible enough for families to make, make the decision that they think is best for their child. We don't anticipate many changes across the board, because we think that right now, the families generally will enroll their child if they feel that it's appropriate and not if they don't. But we all, we have to live through it for a year to make sure. So that's our thinking on this, on the change. So you see that on the bottom on the waiver, which is again dated, so it's only, it's a one-year policy. And we just had to change the language a little bit in the third and the fourth to make sure that it applied appropriately.
Matt?
So just a question. I appreciate that the, the parents actually have the, the option, right, to sort of opt-in, if you will, instead of automatic, and that's the trend anyway, so it probably won't come up much. But if, if the parent really wants the child to, to start, and what, what sort of recourse do they have if they're, if they're of a different opinion than the principal? And I guess the only, the issue is, I guess, the optics of, certainly we have, you know, everyone has an eye on enrollment, especially kindergarten enrollment, right? And so just so the parents realize that this is a completely objective evaluation, evaluation and not sort of capacity-constrained that's affecting their child.
Correct. Yep, actually, the final say will be with the parents with this policy. So after we meet, we'll be sharing those milestones with the parents, but asking them to make the determination of whether or not they feel their child's ready, given this context. And if they feel they are, they'll be able to enroll their child.
Any other questions? And I know there were some changes, I think Brendan, you brought some of those changes, and I think Penny did too, in section three and four last time. Do they look good?
They look great.
Okay. Okay, so, sorry.
Looks good to me.
Great, thank you. So I guess we move to approve, which is a...
We've already first and seconded, so. So it's just a vote.
So it's a vote to approve the second reading of the Board of Education Policy 5100. Those in favor? It's unanimous? Passes? Thank you. Moving on, we move to approve as a second reading the Revised Board of Education Policy 4121, Substitute Teachers, as first moved and seconded by Mr. Naun and Mr. Hogan, respectively.
Again, this is, was spurred on by legislative change, and if you look down to the fourth paragraph, the sentence, "Wherever possible, only fully-certified replacement teachers will be assigned to classes whose regular teachers are on a long-term leave of absence of 60 days or more." It used to be 45, so the state changed the regulations around the length of time a non-certified substitute teacher can be in for a certified teacher. And this just reflects that change from 45 to 60. We always try, of course, to have certified substitute teachers in place wherever possible, and, and we've been pretty successful in that, thanks to our building substitute program and some of the other things that we've put in place. But we're not always able to, and sometimes a wonderful candidate's out there who maybe has private school experience or otherwise, who can step in for a long period of time and do a fabulous job teaching, and we actually have that going on right now over at the middle school, where she's, she transitioned from private, she's doing a great job, and now she's going back to school to get her certification. So this allows her to stay in that position a little bit longer.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving to approve as a second reading, Board of Education Policy 4121. All in favor? That's unanimous. And then, last but not least, move to approve as a second reading the New Board of Education Policy 6720, the Use of Certified Therapy Dogs, as first moved and seconded by Ms. Schudell and Mr. Alves, respectively.
Yes. So this third policy was not spurred on by legislative change, but by staff who was very interested in running a pilot of using certified therapy dog in one of our elementary schools. And it is something that's happened, it's more and more common now, looking across districts and other places. And we felt like if we're going to run a pilot, we wanted to have a policy in place to govern that. So we put this policy together and brought it forward. As you'll see, it's very simple on the surface. It does ask for express permission from the principal and from the superintendent, so that we don't turn around and find dogs everywhere. So we need to specifically approve it. But if you turn the page, it's really the meat of the policy is in the regulation. And all of this has been, it was co-developed with Shipman and Goodwin, our attorneys, and with Kerma, our insurance company. And it very specifically runs through the certifications required, the, you know, thinking through things such as the shots, allergies with students, you know, the, having an exit plan for the dog, knowing where it's going to be throughout the course of the day, very specific in, in order to keep in mind the, what's in the best interest of every individual child. So we've had one session so far over at South with the dog, and it was a big hit. And not only was it a big hit, it was a big dog. It's a Newfoundland, so hard to miss, but was wonderful. The kids loved it, the teachers loved it. And we're starting slowly, we're only doing about once a month to begin, just to give it a try. But if it works out, I think it's something that could benefit all of our elementary schools and even beyond. So this policy gives us the ability to do that.
Questions?
Where did the dogs come from? Is there...
So this one in particular, so our, it's one of our staff members who's trained as a handler, and the dog is a friend's dog who's been trained and certified as a therapy dog, so is ours, and she's worked with the dog before, so she brought that dog in, and that's the one who'll continue to come in over.
Are there specific sort of, sort of occasions that I'm assuming our insurance company requires and others require?
Absolutely.
And, okay. Now, I just wonder, is there an issue with the staff, it being a staff-owned dog versus an actually outside third party? Does that sort of distance us from any potential liability or...
So we went through that with the, the regulation, and you take a quick look, you'll see it very specifically spells out, you know, where those liabilities lie and all of that. And when she's serving as the handler on that, the liabilities lie with her, and she's insured and has all of the proper certifications and everything. But this could be used with a staff member or with a, a private organization as well. So it's flexible enough.
Any other questions?
Would you mind detailing some of the success metrics or what work, what the goal or how we're measuring the success of this program is?
Sure, sure. So in convincing us to do it, the staff member brought forward a host of research that talks about the benefits of having, you know, therapy dogs, animals in a school. It does talk about helping students to, to regulate if they're unregulated at different times throughout the day. It talks about helping students to feel included. So if you are, if you're reading in a classroom and there's a dog present, there could be a student who's a reluctant reader or others, and the dog can serve as somebody that they can read to, things like that. So I think that it's brand-new and emerging for us as we look at it. But the feed, it will be somewhat anecdotal as we get feedback from our staff and from, you know, the families as we go through and have the experiences. We have used therapy dogs in the school before. We've had them at the high school, for instance, during midterms and exams, where it's a drop-in, so they'll be here in the Wagner Room, we might have two or three, and kids can come during, in between the exams or, or during. And continually, again, it's feedback-oriented, but continue to receive positive feedback around, around that, helping students and just that, the stressful nature of things. In the beginning, it's, it's going to be very scheduled, so we'll know what classes the dog's going to go visit, we know, we'll know the time period. All those parents will be contacted, the kids will, you know, will know the dog's coming, so that it's, it's very controlled in that way. But as far as, you know, do we continue to do this at a broader scale or not? I think once we get off the ground, we'll, we'll be able to get a little more specific around that to determine, you know, is it, is it a one and done, or is it something that we want to think about doing at all three of our elementaries?
Excellent. Thank you. Just to follow up on the, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Penny didn't see you.
So will this, dogs that are brought during, at the high school, will they go through this now, certification? Will they have to meet these requirements? Okay.
And, you know, in general, they, they do, but they will now be signing this and following these, the protocol that we're putting in place.
Good.
Yep.
And as far as the elementary school, you said the parents will be notified, is that just in this initial period or going forward, that's going to be standard procedure to notify the parents of that class that the dog is coming in, right?
Yep, standard, across-the-board standard, right. So all school was notified, so that we knew, and then we'll continue to do that to make sure, allergies.
Specific class, yeah, that's one, okay, perfect.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, so...
Hugo?
Yes?
Oh.
Sorry.
I just want to say I'm super excited about this initiative, and this, I think the South teacher who brought this dog in has brought a bunch of really cool things into, into South School. And talking to people at South, I think we're super lucky to have this teacher, and I applaud her for bringing this to New Canaan.
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you, Julie. All right, so move to approve as a second reading, Board of Education Policy 6720. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. So moving on to comments from the public. Would anybody like to comment? Seeing as there are none, we'll move on to announcements of future business.
Sure.
So, of course, in the short term, we have Thanksgiving, which brings the Turkey Bowl, and an opportunity to say thank you to, you know, those in our lives that are important. And so thank you to our Board members, thank you to our Cabinet, thank you to our NCEA representatives, and everybody here. The, we, at our next meeting, we will be giving a, an update on Portrait of the Graduate. We continue to make progress there, and thank you to everyone who was a part of that. It was an excellent process, thanks to everyone's participation. Also thought it was a good time to give an update on our move to 220, just to have a sense of the, the building and where we are. I spoke today with Ian, who is our Director of Technology Services, and he's, he's preparing a cybersecurity update for the Board that we could do an executive session, just to talk about, you know, some of the dynamics of that and what it takes around cybersecurity across the district. It's a good time for that, we thought. And then, of course, we'll have our budget assumptions and related priorities, that'll be coming up. So this is the first Monday in December, and between now and then, we'll also have the opportunity, I believe, on the 28th, for our Board of Education orientation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, buckle up, busy season.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I guess I need a motion to adjourn. Penny, second? Matt Campbell, all in favor? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, buckle up, busy season.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I guess I need a motion to adjourn. Penny, second? Matt Campbell, all in favor? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.